I'll do it. And welcome everyone to our Wednesday, July 14th, meeting of the school committee. Um, I'd like to call it to order at six forty-nine, if everyone could stand for pledge allegiance. I'd like to consider a vote to enter into executive session under R I G L section forty-two, forty-six, five, A two, be a roll call.
Polly Allen.
I.
Travis A.
That's okay.
Travis Adi.
Hi.
Hannah Ayah.
Hi.
Rita Kenahan.
Hi.
Mike Richa.
Hi.
See you in the other means.
Now we don't have to go searching for another link.
I know. What's the password?
Thank you. Now we need to consider, discuss and vote for an appointment of a school committee vice chair. Are there any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Rita Kenahan.
My second.
Great. Um, could we take a roll call on that, please?
Polly Allen.
I.
Travis Adi.
Hi.
Hannah Ayah.
I.
Rita Kenahan.
I.
Mike Richa.
Excellent. Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, so I'd like to vote on Rita Kenahan being the vice chair, please.
Polly Allen.
I.
Travis Adi.
Hi.
Hannah Ayah.
I.
Rita Kenahan.
I.
Mike Richa.
Hi.
Great. Thank you. And now we can consider, discuss and vote on it, the school committee secretary, please. Does anyone have a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Hannah Ayah.
My second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Polly Allen.
I.
Travis Adi.
Hi.
Hannah Ayah.
I.
Rita Kenahan.
I.
Mike Richa.
Hi.
Does anyone else want to nominate anyone for school committee secretary? All right, now we could vote for Hannah Ayah for school committee secretary, please.
Polly Allen.
Bye.
Travis Adi.
Hi.
Hannah Ayah.
I.
Rita Kenahan.
I.
Mike Richa.
All right.
Thank you. I'm not sure if that was a little overkill or not, but I wanted to make sure I, I covered everything correctly. Um, okay, next on the agenda is appointment of subcommittees, liaisons and committee positions. Um, normally I would like people to like request whether they want to be on here. I hate being assigned a subcommittee, but I guess we'll go through it. And if anyone has any major objections, we can, you can just let me know and we'll appoint someone else. So contract negotiation subcommittee, it's current, it's currently Rita and an empty spot. Travis, is that something you might be interested in?
When you say contract negotiations, is that the union contract?
It is, and the, the teachers' union and the non-certified staff.
Yeah, I mean, I'm definitely comfortable with that. I've done union negotiations in the past for Unite two seventy-one, Union two ten thirty-three, so I'm definitely comfortable.
Okay, great, thank you. Next, we have high school contract negotiations. We have Mike on there. Hannah, is this something you'd like to do?
Sure. Yeah, yes.
Okay. Safety subcommittee is myself and Mike.
Polly.
Yes.
So with that, I request to be the chair for that, please.
The safety subcommittee?
No, I'm five point two.
All right. Yeah, high school con.
Yeah, some of the high school contract.
Yes, 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 I'm sorry, yes. Sorry, I don't have a very big desk, so I have all my papers piled up. Um, and I'm reading from one list that may not match up with the other one, sorry. So safety subcommittee will remain the same. Portsmouth School Committee liaison, Rita, did I hear that you are not interested in being the liaison anymore?
Well, I would do this, Rob, continuing the role if I didn't also understand that Hannah might be interested.
There was a conversation with Patrick previously about becoming the liaison in September, which I'm still willing to do. If.
Right with both of you?
In September?
Yes.
Okay, great. Town Recreation Committee liaison. Rita, is that something you'd be interested in?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Scholarship Subcommittee is currently Rita, and there's an open spot. Mike, is that something you would be interested in doing?
Polly, you're talking about five point six?
Safety sub.
I'm talking about the scholarship Subcommittee?
It's five point six, right?
But I didn't hear policy either. I didn't hear five point three or five point six.
So I'm sorry, I'm, I'm going along a list I have from Mariah, and it doesn't match up with the, the agenda, I'm sorry. I'm going in my own order, I apologize. I'll go backwards. So contract negotiations will be.
Travis and Rita.
Yep. Travis and Rita. High school contract negotiations will be Mike and Hannah. Mike will be chair. Policy Subcommittee is Hannah and I. I'd like to stay with that, if Hannah's okay with that.
Definitely.
Okay. Portsmouth School Committee Liaison will be Rita until September and then Hannah. Safety Subcommittee will be myself and Mike.
So.
Scholarship, scholarships, committee is Rita and Mike, are you interested in that position?
I'm what, I'm sorry, what is it, please?
Scholarship Subcommittee.
That's fine.
Health and Wellness Committee is Rita. As long as you're still interested.
Yes, absolutely.
And the school improvement selection committee. So, um, Lori, do you mind just going over this quickly? Because I think we've had, or, or even Carolyn, because we had a discussion about this, there's been some confusion over how many school committee members are on it and the selection team and how it works, just so when we get a selection team, we understand the whole process, please.
If we look at policy ten-ten, school improvement team, if you remember, we did a lot of reworking of our policies last year, Polly, probably about fifty hours or more. And so a school committee shall review the membership composition of each sit team, school, the school committee determine the membership selected by the school's representative. So that's one area where the school committee has agency in each schools, school improvement team. We only have one school here, but if we had eight schools, you would have agency in all of those schools. Also, on the general sit team, two further members shall be directly appointed by the school committee chair. Okay, so two, you can appoint two members, I think you have one in mind, if I'm not mistaken, someone who has a vested interest in the International Baccalaureate Program. And also, the school committee should also have a representative on the application, like I said, review review team, so.
Just one member?
It just said the school committee, yeah, just one member.
Okay.
Yep, so school committee members are not part of sit teams.
Right.
However, they have a hand in appointing two members in our policy and also a hand in the, the selection process. Now, this year was a brand new year, you know, with the statute, the tweak of Title sixteen in early twenty twenty. And we only had two members of the community at large, two parents.
Great.
And, and then it turned into, it rolled into three and Principal Whip reached out to a fourth who is at the community center, and we are in a partnership with them, so we felt that would be appropriate. So we didn't need to actuate a selection committee this year because we had so few community members at large. All of them, you know, could be a part of our sit team for twenty twenty-two. But in the future, hopefully, there'll be twelve, twenty, thirty people interested, and then we could definitely actuate that piece of the process and activate the selection committee.
Okay. Excellent. Would anyone like to be on the selection committee? I don't mind doing it. It doesn't seem like there's any real need right at this moment.
No. Just have that one tiny school, but.
Um, I, I would like to, as a courtesy, recommend Patrick McHugh for the, for the committee. He has been a huge advocate for the IB program and has been following and pushing it and supporting it. And I feel like this is a way for him to stay connected to that. And I, I feel like he would be in a good addition to the team when it comes to that. Um, okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything out?
I would.
Okay.
Six point five, please.
All right, six point five is pulled out. Anything else? All right, um, what would you like to discuss about six point five, Mike?
John, it's going to go to you if you had some questions as far as I just was reading through the bills as far as the, so that we were paying for electricity on meeting house lane, what is that, please?
I think those are the exterior lights. It's like a hundred dollars a month.
Okay. Um, there's just a few of these things, is we're paying for costumes for chorus in Portsmouth?
That was, those were chorus costumes that, that actually a bill must have gotten lost because it came in, that bill probably goes back to the prior year. That was with Cousins, I think it was, yeah.
I don't know who Cousins is.
They're the supplier of the chorus outfits.
So we're paying for costumes for, for Portsmouth? I guess I don't understand that.
Oh no, this was the Little Compton Choir chorus, I should say.
We're paying for Little Compton students to wear the coral attire that they wear in their concerts.
Yes.
Oh, because I thought it was, it was listed on the Portsmouth, I read it on the Portsmouth, that's why I'm asking, that's why it kind of, it stuck out to me, it said. One of the things that kind of stuck out to me was this anthem sports for sixty-four hundred dollars. What was that for, please?
Those were the soccer goals, I believe.
Been needed for a few years. The soccer goals were so old worn and a hazard to the community. The, the community also uses them, the recreation committee, and that purchase was discussed throughout this year.
So I guess, I guess the question comes down, but I see something like that, is that it's supposed to go out for bid, anything over five thousand, it's supposed to come back for school committee approval. And I don't remember this ever coming across, so that's what kind of threw up a red flag. I'm like, when did this expenditure come through?
Well, that one I know was discussed at the school committee a number of times, obviously, I, I believe Patrick was, was pushing for that one, so in terms of the bid process, it, it probably should have been bid, but oftentimes is probably not a huge number of suppliers, and I think during the, the past pandemic, I think it was, it was probably, you know, they went out and found a vendor that could supply those, those, those soccer goals, so. But the policy clearly is generally at five unless they're on the master purchase agreement. If they're on the match, master purchase agreement with the state, you can go to that master purchase agreement.
That was the July eighth, twenty twenty meeting, that the purchase of soccer goals was, I, I believe, discussed, I don't know if it was voted on, but.
It was.
So that was prior to us, so it's just being paid now from last year, from twenty twenty?
Yeah, bills seem to be trickling and.
Pandemic has thrown everything into disarray in terms of programming. We didn't have kids out on the field in active play until late spring.
Okay. Just two other things was that there was a thing for mileage. How, how does that work? Because it was over a thousand dollars in mileage we were paying out.
Mileage would be anybody that obviously goes, for example, the custodians may go down to Ebeck and pick up science kits or whatnot, so they will charge the IRS rate, which I believe is fifty-six cents a mile, depends the miles.
They also bring the water samples and so forth.
Right.
So basically, we're paying, we're paying to use their personal vehicles to, to do this, is that what, that's what we're doing on that? And the last thing I had was the unemployment, how does that work as far as that, because we're in school all the time for the most part, it says April unemployment was like twenty-five hundred dollars. What would that be for?
That was, that was a teacher that was collecting unemployment under our, under our cap. So we, we go through that because frankly, there have been so many fraudulent claims filed. That was the only legitimate, I think, this, this year, I think we had a couple of other small ones, but we did have one teacher that was collecting. That's why that one is, is a little bit higher.
Okay, I guess that's a.
So we don't pay on insurance, we pay based on a claims. So once they, once they submit an application for unemployment and they're approved to collect it, we get a bill from the state which is, okay, you've got to pay for this individual for this many weeks, or how many weeks in that particular period that they collected.
So we don't pay for unemployment insurance like normal employers do, is that?
No. No, it's, you're, you're basically self insured for it is what, is what it is, so.
Okay. Hey. That's, that's it, thank you.
You're good, Mike?
And thanks.
All right, so let's throw that back in the consent agenda if everyone's all okay with that. And vote, and, and can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'll make a motion to approve number six consent agenda. Second.
Then, um, roll call, Mariah, please.
Polly Allen.
I.
Travis Adi.
Hi.
Hannah Ayah.
I.
Rita Kenahan.
I.
Mike Richa.
Hi.
Great, spotlight bullying report. Will, will this be you, Mrs. Whip?
Yep. Um, I did provide a copy of the, in the final end of your bullying report, there were two cases that were investigated after the last report I gave to this committee on January thirteenth. The two from the spring had to do with students calling people inappropriate names, so we did some restorative work and some work with making the students aware of how inappropriate that was and why. We actually had, I'd say, fewer cases in general this school year than we've had some other years, and I'd say the, one of the bigger contributing factors was the kids spent an awful lot of time with each other, so it tended to be kids that were in the same homeroom all day long and were with each other all the time. So I think that contributed them, to them getting a little bit under each other's skin.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone have any questions? Right, superintendent's report? Human Resources update, Carolyn?
It's up to you, rock, paper, scissors, Carolyn. We both have it out.
Well, we are very excited to announce some appointments that have been made. Christopher Osborne Junior will be the head custodian. He has been doing a great job on the summer, summer work and planning that's ongoing. Gabrielle Sullivan has been appointed as the teacher for the second grade one class that we will have next year. Two new custodians have been appointed, and they will begin working here on Monday, July twenty-sixth. They are Paul Borges and Jeffrey Lopez. Paul has been on our custodial sub roster for a few years and has helped out both during the summer and while school has been in session. In addition to his custodial experience in the district as a mechanic and as a carbon fiber technician, Paul has completed coursework and related job experience for his EPA universal certification. Jeffrey has been a custodian for the past fourteen years, most recently in the Westport Schools, and prior to that, he spent over a decade in the New York City Public School System as a cleaner. We are very happy to welcome Paul and Jeffrey to our full-time staff.
Thank you and welcome. So implementation of hybrid school committee meetings.
We are in full swing right now, this is our beta in person. I think we're a little bit rusty, yours truly has not been in a summer suit in two years, happily. But, so here we are. The legislation allowing and requiring virtual meetings under the Open Meetings Act will not pass the General Assembly this session, even though, you know, it, it did pass the House, it, it just is not, there's not enough political will to keep it moving. The Governor's Executive Order EO twenty-one dash seventy-two extends the virtual meeting requirement until July twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. After that, all elected officials and even appointed bodies have to be in person. The Governor's Office has said they do not currently plan to extend the executive order beyond July twenty-first, no matter how much the, you know, various communities advocate for an extension. So here we are, I think we had, you know, a pretty good start, and the only unnerving aspect of this on my part is not being able to see the virtual participants. And, and I understand where that is, Jonathan said, you know, try not to get into Zoom. You know, it, it could cause way too much feedback and so on and so forth, but I think that's the only component that unnerves me, just not knowing which stakeholders are attending and engaged and so you, you could, yeah, someone could open that for us. Oh, Amy, Cheryl, Christine, Kalen, Megan. All right, thank you. So that's good. So who opened that, was it Ryan or, thank you, Jonathan? So that I like, you know, it, it's still not the same, that, it's all good. But I like it, and I like the fact that we are also committing to a virtual option for stakeholders. There's not a superintendent in the state that hasn't reported more engagement at Zoom meetings than in-person meetings. And I think town councils feel the same way, budget committee, committees, so on and so forth. So, you know, being in person is important, I think, for our social emotional health. But also a virtual option is great for our parents and guardians at home and just general members of the community and the town community, our professional learning community here. So I think it's a win-win, everybody. I want to thank Jonathan and Hannah and also Mariah for creating this sort of ad hoc hybrid meeting committee and, you know, really doing the research and landing the plane. Supply chains have been crazy this year when it comes to technology and equipment and self, everything. Supply chains are, you know, really thin, so the fact that we got this super duper camera, you'll be, be able to see it next month, Polly, it's pretty cool. Once it's in automatic mode, it actually follows the voice, it has, you know, obviously, an, an audio sensor, and it, so we really had some fun playing with it recently, so here we are, I think it's, it's been okay. As long as we can go for it.
Yeah, and if I might, I think we'll still encourage participants to attend in.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They can make it some, again, because it's better for us in person, it's better for them in person too, especially if they have some input. But this is a great option for folks who want to attend virtually.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, guys.
And I'm very, I'm very pleasantly surprised from this end, um, how well I can hear everybody, um, and see everybody. Um, and when it tracks people and they're speaking, I think it'll make it only, only better.
Yeah.
And we're, we're hoping to have that up and running for the next meeting, definitely. We, uh, we only got the system in like yesterday, so. So, uh, we, we have a little more playing around with the software to do.
Well, it's excellent.
So Polly.
Yeah.
Polly, if you would, can we just ask somebody from the audience? I don't care who. Just their point of view is, as far as if they can hear all of us speaking, please, anybody? I know you can hear us, but just to make sure that people, I don't know who's going to raise their hand, but anybody if they.
Sure. Someone's got their hand raised.
So Christine, you should be able to talk if you want to unmute yourself.
Yes, I can hear everything very clearly.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, um, on to finance report, Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we have, this is the, um, preliminary year-end report. There's still a lot of, um, reconciliations of accounts that fully to be done and, and certainly, uh, it will be subject to, uh, review by the auditors. But at this point in time, we're looking at, something, uh, north of about fifty thousand dollars for a surplus for the current year. Like I said, there are still a few, a few accounts that I have to go through. And, um, there are some, um, invoices that'll be coming in over the next, uh, month or so that'll still apply to FY, uh, twenty one. So, uh, but at this point, I'm pretty comfortable that we should be showing a, a surplus for the year. As of now, all the payroll expense is booked, so there won't be any changes in that. And for the most part, the, um, the fringe benefits are, um, are pretty much, uh, booked. Um, there's still going to be some reconciliation of some of the pension accounts. And, uh, I'll be doing that over the next, uh, month. But overall, I think it was, um, you know, for the year that we have, it was, uh, it was a, a pretty good, uh, uh, a pretty good year. We do have, uh, some, um, additional, um, technology that we're buying that'll be coming in, in that payable, actually I booked today. So we'll have a, a little bit more of that coming in over the next, uh, couple of weeks. And, uh, because it was in the FY twenty budget, I want to make sure we get that into that, that year. But I'm pretty comfortable that we should be, uh, showing a, a surplus for this year.
So if I could just ask a question, what do you project the, our surplus to be overall in our reserves? What we, what you project now plus what is already existing?
So we have, um, we have, uh, I believe, um, about, I think fifty six thousand in our accumulated reserves as of the beginning of FY twenty one. So whatever we show as a surplus for this year will add to that.
Okay.
So, um, I was, I would, I would expect that we'll probably be a little bit shy of a hundred thousand.
When we get, when you get done with all your, your final. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. McNamee. Um, subcommittee reports, policy subcommittee, um, I'll just table that into the, um, action items. Portsmouth School Committee Liaison Report.
Yes. Uh, so there was a meeting on June twenty ninth and lots of discussion on, uh, the fact that we, they'll be meeting in person as well. Uh, like we are with the virtual option for participants, uh, but they don't have a July meeting, so that'll take place in August. Lots of discussion around the screenings, the reading and math screenings, the STAR data. Not as bleak as they were anticipating, you know, given, um, the distance learning issues and the loss of learning. So they were relatively pleased, but they do have plans for, um, addressing learning loss. They were kind of happy that the SAT scores went up, which I think is a joyful thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Um, and so just, you know, addressing learning loss this summer was a big concern too, but that's what's happening in Portsmouth.
Thank you, Rita.
Welcome.
Um, Town Recreation Committee Liaison Report. So seeing as how our liaison just got appointed and our old liaison isn't here, I'm assuming that we're going to table this. Unless anyone has anything to say about the recreation committee. Wellness Committee Liaison Report.
Actually, I'm sorry, Polly, as far as the recreation committee, that's also going to be, um, August seventh for, uh, that's the, um, dedication to, for the gymnasium, so. I don't know if that would fall underneath them or not. That's since they're part of that.
Yep. It, it, it will, we have a vote a little bit later on regarding it, but yes, there's going to be a dedication to the, um, to Mr. Mack. The, the gymnasium is going to be dedicated to him. Wellness Committee.
So we have not had a meeting since we met last and our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, August twenty fourth.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, discussion items, discussion about drafting a resolution in regards to COVID nineteen vaccination. Excuse me. So, um, Hannah and I met after we were approached in a policy meeting by a parent asking us to consider, um, a vaccine, a COVID nineteen vaccination policy. So we were interested, um, about the discussion around it. And we did have our attorney present and it, regardless of what anyone feels on the committee, it is not in our, in our purview, um, to make a policy that involves a COVID nineteen, requiring a COVID nineteen vaccination to attend Wilbur School. Do you want to add anything to that, Hannah?
Um, not in regards to the policy, but I think what we thought might be a good idea is if we pushed out some sort of resolution, just encouraging vaccination among families in our school and making sure that that gets pushed out to all the relevant, um, media channels. And continue to make sure that the school community has the most accurate, up-to-date information about the safety of the vaccines and everything regarding that.
And that's great. And I would imagine, uh, seeing that come from the school nurses' office, most likely, um, the National Association of School Nurses has a lot of information about it. They're promoting ways to communicate with the community and, and, and the school. So I, I would think so. Um, do you think so, nurse?
Yeah, or, or the school committee, there's enough, there aren't many resolutions out there except those that, resolve to prioritize school employees for vaccines. So there aren't a lot of resolutions out there highly recommending that all members of a school community twelve and older get vaccinated. I, I think that's where you sort of landed on that, more of a resolution.
Yeah.
Stressing and emphasizing, strongly encouraging vaccinations for twelve and older. Uh, so you could get the sub, the policy subcommittee together and start drafting something at the August meeting, perhaps.
Yeah.
Push it through and then share it with other schools because there, I can't find much out there at all, except the resolutions from the fall, uh, late fall and winter prioritizing school employees. This would be different. This is prioritizing vaccinating everyone over, you know, twelve and older. We can't mandate it. We can't ask a verification, um, but we can strongly urge, promote and advocate. If that is your wish, the wish of the committee.
Yes, I think Hannah and I decided that we wanted to put out a resolution. Um, so this will go on our policy agenda.
All right.
On discussion about survey works, superintendent?
Sure. You get my Friday night memo and I always include, uh, anything from RIDE that has to do with Willoughby McMahon School. Department. And, um, Sonia and I continue to, you know, take deep dive into some of the data, shallow dive into, uh, there's a lot of it. And, um, you know, I think our family, uh, data, the data from parents and guardians is solid, generally speaking, above the state average across the board, pretty much. However, um, the areas of concern are the, um, data points from the teacher survey and also definitely the data points, uh, from our students in grade six to eight. Our students in grade six through eight, um, when it comes to school engagement, it's super low, that data point, it's nineteen percent. And, you know, so that is highly concerning. And if you do a deeper dive, you know, you find, um, sort of the data is all over the place for our grades six to eight, but definitely the school engagement, it's concerning. And also real life application of their learning. Uh, the data points around, you know, will you ever use, you know, will I ever use this information? You know, I think it's maybe thirteen percent said, yes, I will use what I learn in school. So the relevancy of what they're, the relevance of what they're learning, um, the real, the, they're conceptualizing our young adults, um, the real life application of their knowledge, uh, pretty low. And, and the international baccalaureate will definitely, um, definitely answer, uh, some of those questions around how do we engage our young adults? They definitely like hands-on learning. They love problem solving. They love, um, argumentation, persuasion. If you've ever raised any, um, middle schoolers, so, you know, so we do have pieces in place to, um, you know, serve as, you know, support for kids in these areas and, you know, improvement of student engagement, um, real life application of learning, so on and so forth. The, uh, teacher data was concerning and I, I, I definitely did share some of that in my Friday night memo. We only had twenty six, uh, teachers respond. That's a very small sample. And so it doesn't take much to, you know, move the needle with, with a sample like that. And the areas, especially around professional learning, professional development. Teachers definitely gave admin, um, thumbs down on having agency in, you know, just what PD days should look like, having agency in, um, sort of guiding their own professional learning, their professional practice. And Principal Whip does have a survey. She ran it by me, uh, to follow up on this survey, uh, in that area. And so, um, you know, that was, you know, some of those data points were, were really concerning. I was raised, you know, to believe that whether you're volunteering or being paid for a job, you bring your own morale to it. That said, the pandemic, um, definitely, uh, stressed and challenged our educators and specialists like never before. And I just have, you know, a, a shortlist pandemic, Promethean Board, Plan Board, IB, you know, our initiatives here in Little Compton were incredibly, um, ambitious before the, the pandemic hit. And so, you know, we have been moving with IB since my first year here, so since two thousand eighteen, nineteen school year. So that itself is a process, uh, especially for our middle school teachers. And you add the, um, pandemic and this wonderful technology that was a steep learning curve. In order for IB to be launched, we need to centralize our curriculum and have one spot for guaranteed viable curriculum, um, in sync with all the learning standards. And so that's where Plan Board comes in. So we asked a lot of our teachers and it's, it's, uh, certainly, um, not a shock that we took a hit in some of those areas. We did everything we could this year. We had catered lunches for every PD day. We, you know, activated the EAP, we had all kinds of offerings. We, you know, we have low classes, among the lowest class sizes in the state. Wonderful working conditions and benefits and salary, but it doesn't take away the fact that, um, the twenty six teachers who completed that survey, by and large, there are areas that we need to unpack and we need to work on.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that?
I have a question. Um, Dr. Diaz, how many of you, you said twenty six was low participation. How many teachers would it have been if it was every?
That's really not very low. We're just a small sample.
Okay, that's, I was going to say, I felt like that was a.
It's almost every, almost virtually every, we were very close to a hundred percent participation of our staff because it's, it's only the certified teacher, it's staff members. It doesn't, um, it's half the staff.
I get you.
It doesn't reach out to the teacher assistants or it's, it's, they give you a very narrow definition of who should take it.
Okay.
So students and staff, we actually had between ninety percent and a hundred percent participation because we control that. The families, we beg.
I do have another question. With, uh, the implementations that took place with Jonathan's help and virtually overnight, I mean, s- schools everywhere had to change on a dime as, as we all did. Do we find that the international baccalaureate program can be implemented in a, I mean, you mentioned twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. That seems like a millennia ago. And now that we're, we're moving, everything is just moving exponentially, across several industries. I mean, can, can we get this into the students, into the teachers' classrooms, into the students? So we're getting that thirteen percent or nineteen percent, whatever tragically unhipped number that was, up.
That was so great. Um, it certainly helped me with my federal grant writing, you know, the student engagement piece, uh, those, those data points. But I lost sleep over those data points, if I may, Chair.
Yes, yes, go ahead.
So year one was, um, research. Year two was last year. That was, um, the first, that was our application year and it's a whole process, very systematic, um, framework. And brilliant, um, when it is implemented with fidelity, et cetera, and not in a pandemic. And then year three, which is right now, um, is, um, year one of candidacy. We'll have two years, so next year will be year two. And September of twenty twenty two, we will likely be, uh, will be audited. We have someone flying in again. We had someone fly in in the fall. And we'll have someone fly in this year as well. I write all of that into Title II, so it's, it doesn't come from our operating budget. It, it comes from federal grants. So it's a lot. It, it's a lot, even just dur- during the research phase, that first year. Uh, and the application phase was a lot. You, you're meeting with teachers, you're getting information, you're giving them the loadout, you know, right? And it, it, it's a lot. Um, it's not a curriculum. It is an enhancement of your instructional and co-curricular programs. And it is all about real life application and problem solving with kids' love, which kids love and which many traditional middle schools do not have, you know, have enough of that. So this will be an answer to the student engagement piece, um, the relevancy part that kids like, this isn't relevant to my real life. And some of that data, um, was rooted out here. And, um, there's also community service component, which is huge. And this is a community that loves connecting that way. And the schools haven't really, um, you know, they put their toe in a few times, but this is going to be sort of all in. Every single eighth grader will have a sort of capstone project that is, um, based on problem solving, uh, within the, uh, local community and or greater community. So I think that'll definitely help us. Now, I think we have to remember, we had one of the most successful in-person, um, educational experiences in the state. That said, it was on the backs of the hard work of administration and our teachers and specialists and the families and the school committee. and the families and the school committee. With that came a lot of stress on, on everybody. And, uh, administration, we did support our staff all the time, we gave them gifts, we gave them food, we catered. It just, we gave them the best resources out there, bleeding edge. But it was a lot and I take responsibility for that. It was too much.
Don't worry, it was for everyone. Uh, just trying to.
Um, along the lines of the sixth and eighth grade, sixth through eighth grade report and, um, the IB program being kind of an answer to the engagement with curriculum. That, like you said, won't be technically really implemented till the twenty twenty-two school year. So what's the plan for the twenty twenty-one school year to engage the students and make them feel like their coursework matters in their everyday life?
One good thing is, um, EL education is coming, K through eight. It is a thirty-six thousand dollar curriculum program. Um, I wrote it into the federal grants, which we just got approval for the bulk of it yesterday. And what that does is it takes English Language Arts and pulls in SEL, math, science, communities, everything. It is all encompassing. Sometimes a problem, you need to throw money at it. You know, just like for, you know, opening up school and being in person, we needed to throw money at that. And we did a fantastic job. And now we have to work on engagement. And we did have a very traditional delivery model here, you know, the sage on the stage generally. And this generation will not abide by that and the data shows it. And so, um, we may find more teachers exhausted next year as we try to re-engage, uh, restart our middle school. There's a reason why we chose to implement IB, IB's middle years program. Our little kiddos in, um, grade three to five, I, I actually wrote happy campers, I mean, it was just the sweetest thing. Our middle schoolers, we certainly cannot ignore that. So between the EL, we'll roll out pieces of it, we will, you know, I would, we would love to go through some of it, uh, maybe in August or in the fall to show you just how, I'm gonna use Jonathan's term again, bleeding edge. It is, and, uh, this is a huge investment, it's also more PD for teachers. So, I mean, I think this school is in the middle of a huge transformation. And, um, it's going to be, uh, transformative for our instructional program, co-curricular, co-curricular programs. I mean, this year we'll have arts teachers working together on, uh, multimodal and cross-curricular, uh, units and lessons. It's gonna be such a cool thing. But it's a lot of change. We never, it was a lot of change before the pandemic and before these new, uh, other modalities came into our lives. You have supported everything so far and it's, it, it's a long-term, we, we need the long view here. We need the long view. That said, um, I take full responsibility for staff feeling absolutely exhausted. I really do.
Well, I
I don't think
appreciate your sentiments, Lori, and, um, I, but I, I don't think you deserve all of that. The
Not at all.
It, it, we had, we had a pandemic that disrupted every aspect of what went on in this school and in this community and in our world. And I think, and it is just very disappointing to see those results, right? But when I look at the middle schoolers and know a little bit about how they interact and engage and rely on one another the whole thing, the trips that were canceled, the field trips, the, they couldn't be with one another, they, it, it just was so disconcerting, it was tough for them. And so I can understand, I think this year is an anomaly.
And that, the timing of the administration very much went along with the pand, it was like, right, it was February, March, we were so
Yeah, I, so I mean, it's, it's disappointing. Please do not take this on your shoulders.
Well
There's just too much going, there was too much going on and we did, this staff did the best they absolutely could from what I could see. I am, I am concerned about the teacher data. And, and I wonder if some of the lack of engagement in the middle schoolers, that comes from maybe some of the, the teachers' responses. So I'd really like us to very carefully look at, um, at that. And again, they were affected by the pandemic just as significantly. But I'd like that to really be addressed and I, I, if, if it's okay, if we could just continue this conversation
Absolutely.
and see what kind of plan we could.
Our eighth graders missed and our seventh graders, those legendary experiences in Philadelphia, in DC, at Buck Hill. And I think a water park of some sort, Canopy Lake, Canopy Lake Park. And we did do the prom, which was fun. And I, you know, it's, all the teachers showed up. But it's, it's, it's a small community, a very small cohort. And teachers can't help but feel the kids. You walk into a room, you feel energy. And if you walk into, and I'm saying that to Carolyn today, you walk into a surprise birthday party, you can feel that love before you even cross that threshold. We could, I could feel the kids, um, gosh, their, their anxiety, their disappointment, um, their, uh, they're like nihilistic almost, like, oh, what's the point? Uh, you know, that sort of thing. Wonderful kids. And, and so if I could feel it, I'm sure the teachers could feel it. And, um, so, and vice versa, you know, that's, that's reciprocal. It's, education is a transactional business. And so whatever kids were feeling, whatever teachers were feeling, that's, you know, that is a transaction. And, um, so I think administration, we need, we need to use our powers of discernment and we need to prioritize various PD initiatives rather than, you know, pedal to the metal on everything. Because that was the plan and, and, and that was the focus. So, um, so on the one hand, we had a very successful year, probably one of the most successful in the state relatively, you know, um, and on the other hand, it took its toll.
So if I could, what are we, are we looking to reinstate some of those experiences for the upcoming?
Hoping.
Forward, I mean, to, because that's a, is the classroom part, but there's also the social part that that brings them up versus just being in the classroom all the time. So I mean, the, the social interactions outside of the classroom
Yeah.
uh, as a group is, is a positive thing on, on them. So, um, what is our goal going into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year for that?
Our goal is, is, and Principal Whip can speak to that more specifically, but to offer everything that we can socially, emotionally for the kids. I think the Delta variant and, you know, the science will tell us where we're going with this, the data, um, will tell us where we're going, but I'm sure the middle school teachers and, uh, principal and, um, students, we did add student support services, we added Cara DiGiulio, she will be on next year as well. We wrote her into Title I and Title IV. And we're getting a point-six social worker here dedicated to our school, something that I've advocated for, that's from the region. And that person, uh, I've tried to bring her in and introduce her. So between Cara DiGiulio and also, um, the new social worker, that's, you know, another FTE, Student Support Services staff member for kids. So that's some heat off the staff.
And how do students, um, like how aware of these types of resources are they? Like, um, I mean, I remember being in fifth grade and there being a whole kind of afternoon where the guidance counselor came in and discussed resources and time management, planning, things like that. Like how, um, engaged are those student support members in the classroom on a daily basis? Because it seems like from these surveys that not only are the middle schoolers feeling disconnected from the adults in the school, but they seem to have a lot of extra stress. And I'm, I'm sure that obviously the pandemic has a lot of, has a lot of stress on all of us, but, going back a couple of years, I believe it's the twenty nineteen surveys we got as well, these numbers weren't that much, um, better than they are right, showing right now. So what, how um, accessible are those resources to the student on a daily basis? And do they know about them? And how are you telling them about them? There's kind of some of the questions that arose.
Principal Whip can definitely take that, but Mary Elizabeth Miller pushes into a lot of, a lot of the classrooms in the, um, open circle. And also, um, choose love. So we may want to rethink choose love, I'm not sure. I mean, that is definitely something on, on the building level, but, um, I'd be willing to assist in exploring additional programming for our middle school kids.
Um, I, I actually think that we have a, I think they're very aware of it and I think we make a, um, we, two years ago with, when we had less SEL staff, we tried to spread Mary Elizabeth as far as we could. This year, bringing Cara on, we were able to, um, kind of, um, distribute the labor a little, between the two of them. So what happens is they will go into all classes just for a, for like a weekly open circle or choose love or advisory. Um, I was, I met with Mrs. Miller today to discuss next year's schedule and we were looking at ways that we can divvy things up so that there's always two of them available. So the kids get to know the SEL staff very well. Many of, many kids will seek out support when they need it. There are some kids who will not seek out support and that comes down to teachers recognizing or parents recognizing and reaching out to our staff. So that we can try to put supports in place. I mean, this summer, we have kids that are continuing coming in to meet with Mrs. Miller over some things that they've worked on during the school year. Or kids that we know that, you know, just need to have some ongoing support before they hit the school year. And I'd say that's very fluid and it changes. It's not like they see one group of kids from day one to day one eighty. It's, it just depends on what the need is. But going into every class and doing lessons and making sure that all kids know all of the staff members so that they're comfortable, if they ever need the support, we try to front load that so it's not at a time of distress at their first meeting.
Right. Okay. Um, and then I just have another question relating to the teacher, um, survey. It also seemed like there just wasn't, um, again, going back past surveys as well, that there's been this trend of, um, lack of support and lack of communication. And I just was wondering if either of you had, um, specific plans or general plans going into next school year, how to, um, better communication between teachers themselves and teachers with admin and things like that.
I think that's a building level, you know, and I know because I get it every day.
I was gonna say, I, I mean, literally, there's a communication that goes out every single morning. And I meet with the vast majority of teachers at least once a week, so, um, I, I, I guess the, the, the key will be to hone into what the needs are. It's not that the, there's, it's not that there's not a mechanism for communication.
Yeah. I mean, and that's the thing about surveys too, is we can't ask, these aren't specific, like it's not saying very specifically, but they were just, especially, it was just concerning, I think, to see that it, um, it was such a steep drop this year, which I think we can account to COVID, but in past surveys as well, they weren't great responses. And, um, I think teachers feeling supported then goes into how they teach as well, which then goes into how students feel supported, which is the bottom line. And, um, just wanted to ask you a few questions about that. But, um, you said you were gonna do another survey towards the teachers about their administration?
Well, we, it was, we were, we were looking at professional development.
Okay, okay. Well, okay, thank you.
What, just probably one, one last question. In a hypothetical world, if the conditions or everything was fine and we can, there's no restrictions on us, what would you say that, and you may have thought of this and you may not have, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm sorry if I do, is that what could we do for the kids going forward in the fifth through eighth grade in those extra activities that they've done in the past? For something for them to look forward to?
Do you, are you, do you mean more like after-school activities or more like the, are you looking at more of the capstone trips?
I, I Yeah, yeah, trips, something outside of the, I understand you guys are all explaining the, the extra supports and everything. And that's great, that's all in classroom, but I'm talking about stuff that, that's, takes them out of the classroom or also life experiences outside of the classroom, um, that gives them something to look forward to. So have you put any thought into that? And what would your, what would that have been if?
I, I think the, the the type of activity that would make the most sense in the immediate short term is something on the Buck Hill range because at least there we can control, you don't have kids in airports or going to out of state or in airplanes. I mean, it's a little bit more controlled as far as who they're exposed to. I think those are the things when we're looking at, um, uh, you know, the, the way things are spreading and how things are spreading around the country, that, that we would have to be very careful of. Whereas that, you know, we can control the transportation and only have our own kids and our own staff and they stay together. So something like that would be something that we could look into. We started to look into that at the end of the year, but then things got a little complicated with, um, just got complicated and, and putting that type of activity together. But I think that's the most, something along those lines, not necessarily that specifically. And then the next, the, the, the next thing we would have to look at is the way financing changed because the, um, being able, needing to fundraise and provide fun, funding for all students was something that we had talked about just prior to this school year. So figuring out how to, how to raise funds for, um, without being able to ask specifically for parent donations, for parent, requiring parents, okay? So there's a couple of different elements that we would have to look at.
So my, only my two cents would be is that please look at more programs towards, whether it's Buck Hill or something that's very similar to that. Because, um, number one, I think it's very important. And number two, I think it's something for the kids to, to look forward to. Again, it's still life experiences, it's still an educational experience and it's outside of the classroom. Not everything is, um, you don't learn everything in the classroom. Um, so that is something, please take that into consideration. I'm sure you are. I'm not doubting you, I'm not doubting you, but I'm just, I'm just saying that it's
Fingers crossed.
Those are, those are memories, um, for them as well. Not, not the, we gotta go to school and, and, and have nothing to look back on and, and take away from it, you know, I mean, I feel bad for the, the, the classes this past year.
Well, this particular eighth grade missed the bulk of their seventh and eighth grade activities, so they really got
Philadelphia.
So I'd, I'd rather us be proactive and, and even if we have to think outside the box and do something different than we've done in the past. Not sure what that answer is just yet, but we have a little bit of time.
Before we leave this subject, going back to teachers. Yeah, um, I always love a field trip and I'm totally supportive of what you're saying. I want to add on to something that Hannah mentioned about surveys. And it, it, it's a, it's data points, but it's not the whole picture, right? So it's limited in what you can collect in a survey. And I'm wondering if you've given any thought to a follow-up, maybe to get some more qualitative data from the teaching staff and from the teachers' support staff. Maybe a small focus group or some sort of, hey, this doesn't look so great, can we have a small group of people who are vocal about their concerns and hear a little bit more? Is that, is that a possibility? I know you're talking about a small staff to begin with.
Well, I, I mean, one of the things that happens on a pretty regular basis and did happen at the, I would say the last week of the school year is that, um, I meet pretty regularly with the LCTA Executive Board and that's a, well-distributed group that has people from specialists to elementary teacher to, they, there is a, they, they do a good job of making it a representative sample. But things like what next year's schedule might look at, so throwing out some ideas like that to get their feedback, that's already happened. I mean, but that has happened on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah. So what is the other? I mean, it just, just to kind of noodle around and say, there's something here, can we get a little more? Can we get a little more information to address it? Because it, it could be a very simple solution. If it's about professional development, maybe there are other. Offerings. I, I don't know. I know you're doing a lot, um, but. Yes, it's just worth it, I think, to consider other ways to maybe get a little more info.
Um, within the survey, is there the opportunity to like include an essay question? For example.
Open ended.
An open ended. I think it's important to ask every educator today. What is school teaching us? Is. You know, I'm, I graduated in the year two thousand, so. It was very much the industrialized way of learning. And it is not the world anymore. The gig economy has taken over. I mean, it's, and I see why the children are not engaged. Because it's, it's not applicable to learn about. John Adams in seventh grade in the classroom and not have those. Not apply it if you're not gonna go into those fields, whereas the computers, the internets, they're going, they're going home and they're seeing thirteen, fourteen, fifteen year old kids. On the social media that are making money, that are, that are getting out of school, that are going ahead, that are going into changing the world, whether it's. Pulling all the plastics out of the ocean and then recycling them, or they're, they're, they're taking these grand ideas. And I think the baccalaureate. Program will help that. But I think that there's a lot of folks, myself included until recently, that were living in that old way of thinking. And that is not the world anymore. I mean, we, we went overnight from, how are we gonna do school? And everybody's like, download Zoom. What, what, what do you mean? What is it? Boom, nobody had it. And then it was the number one downloaded app globally. So these changes are happening faster than we think. Um, there's a lot of blind spots for all of us. But I think it's important to see if the teachers are all on the same page. Maybe we've all kind of. Think one way and we're doing one thing. We're like, wow, we didn't think of it like that. So I would just encourage, you know, the survey's tough when it's like A, B, C, you know, scale of one to ten. Some data points of like open ended, give me your opinion, let them kind of unload. And maybe we can do some stuff out of that, because I'm with Hannah, the, these numbers are, th- they're troubling. They're troubling. I mean, we're a small community, we should be crushing everything. We should be leading, leading the team and. Being a guiding light and a beacon for the whole state of Rhode Island with the numbers we have in our ratios. So. I, I think it, it's encouraging to, to have these conversations, but I think it's also implementing them and taking the next steps because. Things are just, the next ten years in everything we do is going to change immensely. And with Moore's Law, I'm not gonna bore you with that, but it's happening faster than everybody thinks and realizes. And the numbers and the expon- exponents, humans have trouble conceptualizing, so. I would just encourage us to kind of take a step back, see if everybody's on the same page. A survey's great. But like I said, a one to ten rating, it leaves much to be interpreted. Um, and if you can say, hey, what do you need? I mean, maybe, what can I do for you? And if they leave it blank, they leave it blank. But if they have. Man, we asked them what they need and everybody turned in three pages of. Poured their hearts out. Well, then we know we need to kind of go in that direction rather than, oh, they all checked box number two. You know? Go ahead, Laura.
Well said. Uh, the teachers gave the school super high marks for resources. I mean, like through the roof. So resources, not just material resources, but also planning resources. Most of our teachers um have two uh or more hours a day for planning of their own contractual hour. And also some co-planning, some professional learning community time, et cetera, et cetera. So we know we are resourcing our teachers. Through the roof, you know, there are many categories where we're well above the state average and, and that is.
Absolutely.
So we know it's not the resources, the time they're getting, you know, the time they need. Um, every teacher needs that time and they're getting the material resources definitely. So it is one, a snapshot in time when, when someone takes, you know, a survey. And some of the questions are wonky and then also some of the um extrapolations are wonky, you know, fa- answered this favorably and yet it's negatively. Um, uh phrased question. It's, it's, you know, it's almost like, uh, I'd say it again, like cognitive dissonance. With some of the little kids' questions. Absurd, but it's data and, and it's real and it's actionable. Um, not all of it, but, but some of it. So we know we're supporting teachers on the building level and the district level. You know, throughout their day, throughout their practice. So we do have to take a deeper dive. What is going on? It's, it's a morale problem.
And it's, and it's everywhere.
And it's everywhere. Every superintendent is dealing with everywhere. And it's a small sample, so you know, you can skew.
Did we, did we have any teachers that are not coming back or resigning for year twenty twenty one?
No, I mean.
Just curious because I know people, all districts coast to coast, that I'm like, you're not, you're not going back to teaching? And they're like, no, I, I can't do it.
I do too.
So I'm sure that.
So.
In the same boat, but.
Well, no, you know, teachers vote with their feet. This is the district no one leaves. That said, um, it might be a district that is averse to radical change. And, and that's where we are now. We're, we're in a stage of radical change. And, and we have to be, and we're all feeling it, you know, school committee, administration, and, and especially those who do the hardest jobs in every community. Our teachers. Um. So we have to figure this out. And once again, we're, we're, we're building while flying. You know, we have to keep on moving forward with the school year and tap into what is it? So, no, we don't have anyone who's not coming back of that, you know, right now. And, and if. He, she, or they, you know, choose to leave, generally it's for a, a position that is not a lateral position, but you know.
Oh, no, I'm saying, I know, the people I'm speaking of.
They're just leaving altogether.
Yeah, and I'm like, well, what, they're like, well, I'm gonna do this now. I was home with my kids. It didn't work out at school. They cut my, so. I, that's thrill, that's awesome. So we have, we have a good base.
We do.
To figure out how we can get everybody on the same page. I think a little bit more details into the survey.
Right.
I mean, we've all had surveys. You get off an airplane, they give you a survey. And I mean, what, 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 the, has the airline ever improved? No, it's just gets, it's getting worse and worse. So it's the same thing, like the data is great, but what are we doing with it to improve the lives of the teachers, the administration, the children, the parents? Everybody collectively.
And that's why we're here.
Correct.
And that's why this is an agenda item. A- and that's why, you know, I put it in my Friday night memo. That point had just come out and I was just, whoa. It was literally all over the place. Um, the good news is we have enough resources, teachers, we're, most districts that they run out of paper. And you na- you name it in, in January. So we're good, but um we shouldn't have a lot of paper anyway, I'm not in the digital age. Uh, the bad news is we have to figure this out. We have to crack this up. So. We're on it.
Excellent. Thank you. Any more questions about survey works? Okay, um. Discussion about um school improvement team. We covered this earlier in the agenda. Does anyone have any more questions that I wanna cover anything else? I just wanted to clarify. What Lori read about, so Polly nominated self for the, or appointed herself for the nomination committee. And then that committee appoints to school committee members or Polly is the member on the school improvement team?
Um, Polly is the person on the selection committee that we do not have to activate.
Okay.
Here, we don't have to actuate that piece of the policy. We didn't have enough people um apply. And policy, excuse me, Polly can also, according to the policy, appoint as the chair.
Okay.
Two members to the sit team.
And has that?
She, she appointed one, and that was Patrick McHugh, I believe.
Yes.
She didn't appoint the second.
So. Up to two, but I don't think that they can be members of the school committee.
So they can't.
Right, so I would have to find someone from the public, which is um. As I understand, people are not like lining up to join the sit committee. But um if anyone has any suggestions, feel free to let me know. Um, I do have a couple of parents that I think. Would be a good fit. I have no idea if they'd be interested or not. Um. I don't know, I'm, I'm open to anything.
So she's part of the selection team as the chair and um. She can also appoint. Up to two members to the sit team. She can't be a member of the sit team.
I just wanted to, yeah, clarify that. In my, in my head, I thought it meant um. She nominates school committee members to it, so I just wanted to clarify that point.
Committee members can't be on sit teams. It would be um a breach of the statute and which is all about site based management.
Okay, thank you. I, I hear that the sit team is like a runner up for school committee involvement and how the school runs. One of my school committee mem- member friends from another town told me that, so. Good place to be. Um, public input. Is there any um public input? Jonathan and Mariah, can you tell me if you see any one with a hand raised?
We see no hand raised in the audience.
Okay, feel free to raise your hand at any point if you like to chime in.
Is there something in the chat?
Uh, there is somebody, well, Travis was speaking, Christine said, very well said.
Thank you. Um, action items considered to discuss and vote to amend the section five oh four of the rehabilitation act policies and procedures second read. So I'd like to um bring John Anderson in on this. He did a bunch of his work. Um, only he could do five oh four.
Sure, um, good evening, everybody. Um. You will recall from previous meetings that I explained that back in two thousand and ten. And I'm not joking about two thousand and ten, not a single person on the school committee, not a single person. Not myself, um, were involved with the Little Compton's um school committee at the time. But a complaint was filed with the United States Department of Education Office of Civil Rights. Alleging that the uh Little Compton School Department had failed to accommodate a child with a disability. The Little Compton School Department at that time entered into an agreement. With the United States Department of Education, um Office of Civil Rights and signed that agreement. Now, the superintendent at the time signed that agreement. Saying that the uh Little Compton would A. Um, change its policies and, and redo its policy. B, provide training to um the staff. And indeed, in two thousand and eleven, there was some training that was provided to the staff. And that training was submitted to the United States Department of Education. Ten years later, and that gives you an idea how fast our federal government worked.
I'm not kidding.
Not kidding, no, we're not kidding. The Office of Civil Rights said, hey, Little Compton, we signed a settlement agree with you back in two thousand and ten. And we want to make sure that you have complied with it. And we're not sure um that you did the appropriate training. And needless to say, we could find records that there was training, but we could not provide copies of what the training was. Or how long it lasted or who attended. We just knew that there was a training session back in two thousand and eleven. Um, and so much has changed with regard to section five oh four in the last ten years. That we needed to address our policy and so that everybody understands. Section five oh four is a federal anti discrimination law that prohibits. Um recipients of federal funds from discriminating against anybody with a disability. And when I say anybody. It applies to students, it applies to um our employees. And essentially to qualify under section five oh four, you have to have a physical or mental impairment. That substantially limits a major life activity. A major life activity could be walking, it could be learning, it could be hearing, it could be seeing. If you have meet that, that criteria, then we are responsible for providing reasonable accommodations. And a good example of a reasonable accommodation is that we don't have to have, you know, allow a person who is visually impaired. For example, to drive a school bus or to be the person who dispenses medication as the school nurse. On the other hand, if it is something that we can reasonably address, we have to do it. And we have had both employees and teach, uh, students with um five oh four plans. Outside of the school area, you perhaps all might be more familiar with the term Americans with Disabilities Act. That's what the section five oh four is, except that that's the terminology that's used in schools. As a result of their finding our file ten years later, um, we provided training on section five oh four. To all of the faculty in May. We documented the training, we provided copies of the PowerPoint presentation that I gave. To the Office of Civil Rights in Boston and they said, great, check off the box. You have had training, we like your training, your training is good. They also above provided us with comments to our policy that was in place at time. To address changes in the law and changes in interpretation. Um, we, I had several back and forth with the lawyer from the Office of Civil Rights in Boston. What you have in front of you is the product of that back and forth process. And again, to simplify, it stands for the proposition that. A person with a physical or mental impairment. That substantially impairs a major life activity, we are responsible for providing reasonable accommodations. It sets forth a grievance procedure whereby if people think that they have not been um treated fairly. Through that process, that they have an ability to appeal. It also provides a set of expectations that people who exercise their rights under section five oh four can follow. What I'm asking for you tonight to is approve this, is to approve this policy. And it will take the place of the policy that you have currently on your books that has not been looked at in quite a while.
Great, thank you, John, for that explanation. Um, does anyone have any questions for John?
No, I would just like to add that Judith Human. Uh, the disability rights activist who was really partly responsible for a five oh four. To bringing it to legislation in the ADA Act. So um, if anybody's interested for more background on the five oh four. And it's on being human and it's a fabulous read.
Brilliant, yeah, yeah.
They have a version of it. She just released a, for children. You must have it in the library. Yeah.
Oh, that's great. We're gonna try to get her hopefully for our discussion in the fall.
Of course. Yes.
We did get Joe and Jeremy Iverster, so.
Wait, so if no one has any questions for John, um, do I hear a motion to um. Accept the amended section five oh four of the Rehabilitation Act Policies and Procedures?
You have a motion, second.
Thank you. Uh, roll call, Mariah, please.
Polly Allen.
Yay.
It's Audie.
Yay.
Anna Yat.
I.
Rita Kenahan.
I.
Ikercha.
All right.
Great, thank you, it passes. Um, next, consider, discuss and vote on the amendment of the flag protocol. So this is a first read, so it will not be a vote. But Hannah and I met um. And we added a line to the fr- flag protocol. Policy. Um, I think you all received it. Um, it reads, the superintendent may also display a flag in support of community awareness initiatives. During special recognition days or months, which align with the support. And support the board's values, principles, education, educational mission and expectations consistent with the equality and excellence. In education policy. Does anyone have any questions?
Oh, yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Since the, the, the town is in the process of doing a policy as well. Have you guys reached out to them to see what their policy where is or will be or at what point, where are they at? So that. Being that we're both town buildings, that maybe we should be unified as far as, and how we handle this going forward.
Um, I have not heard anything about their policy. I know they were talking about um adding a policy. I have not heard that um they have. I have not heard that they have have even started the process. I don't know. Has anyone else?
Maybe we can share ours with them.
Yeah.
Right.
You know?
Right, yeah, we can, we can go forth between now and the next meeting. I can reach out to. The town chairman and see if they have started the process. See if they're interested in reading what we've added and see if they have anything noteworthy that we may want to add.
I just, I just asked that we maybe we be unified on this so that it's it's the same. I I understand it's the town and it's and it's the school department, but at the end of the day, it's, we're all the same. Everything's the same. So I, if we have one policy for. I think that would be best.
I'm I'm not sure of another case where we align policies, but I'm certainly willing to reach out to them and see what they have. I I believe in this policy and if the town did not, that wouldn't make me not want to support this policy. But I'm certainly willing to see where they're at with this. But we felt like this was important and we needed to get it on the agenda and get it rolling and didn't want to shuffle any feet on the subject. So we got right to it. But I'll reach out and see if I, if they have anything they want to add to it.
Okay.
Any more questions about that? Okay, moving on. Consider discussing vote on the allocation of five hundred dollars to the Wilbur McMahon School Gym Dedication. Your roll call.
Excuse me for one second, Polly. I'd like to excuse myself from this one, please.
You want to recuse yourself from the vote?
Yes, please.
Okay. Do you have a, do you have a form to give Carolyn or Mariah?
Sorry, it's a roll.
Right, do you want me to go grab a recusal form?
Can we just, can he abstain from the vote or does he have to, can he abstain from the vote or does he have to do a recusal form?
Wants to be recused from the discussion too.
That's fine.
John, do you want to weigh in on it?
Yeah, if a member of the school committee has a conflict of interest as defined by the state ethics codes, they need to fill out a recusal form. A copy of the recusal form is placed in the school committee minutes and the clerk sends a copy to the Ethics Commission in Providence. If a person is abstaining, however, for whatever reason they so choose, other than a conflict of interest, then no form is necessary. So it's up to the person to decide whether or not they are recusing because they believe they have a conflict of interest as divided by the Ethics Commission. As to whether they need to fill out a form.
So I'll clarify it. So I'll abstain from that so that there is no conflict.
Okay, if there's no conflict, then there's no need to, you know, fill out forms and mail them into Providence and so forth.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that clarification, John. So do I have a motion to allocate five hundred dollars to the Wilbur McMahon School Gymnasium Dedication?
Almost.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion? So I would, I would just like to clarify that this is, we're going to be dedicating the gymnasium to Mr. McGregor. Who's been. Right, a legend at Wilbur McMahon. I don't know a past student that hasn't been positively affected by him. The dedication is on August seventh. I don't know the times off the top of my head, but all are welcome. And these funds are to help with a dedication plaque and a few refreshments, I believe. So we have a roll call vote now, Mariah, please.
Polly Allen.
I.
Travis Aya.
I, don't, I'll be sorry. It's okay.
Hi.
Rita Kenahan.
Hi.
Mike Richa.
I'm staying from the.
All right, great, it passes. Consider vote, consider discussing vote to approve any request for information from administration and or legal counsel. Does anyone have any requests?
I would just like to have the Survey Works, like a follow-up discussion next month, put on the agenda, please.
Okay. And Travis, in case no one's explained it to you, this is the time when. Sorry about my voice. If a school committee member wants to request something of our legal team or our administration that would require. A substantial amount of time that might be costly to the the school district, that we would vote on it if. If we think it's going to cost a lot of, a lot of man-hours. Lori, do you see any issue with the follow-up with Survey Works?
No, no, not at all.
Just to kind of piggyback on the discussion we had and see where we're at ahead of next school year.
Absolutely.
Great, super. Thank you. Does anyone have any more questions in the audience or any questions? Not anymore. If not, I will take.
Polly, there is a hand up.
You can talk now, Christine. You need to last name and address.
Yes.
We're gonna need your last name and address as well to make public comment, please.
Yes, it's Olivera and it's forty-nine Long Highway.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Is there going to be a metric put in place in regards to when masks are needed? For the students?
I can, I can take that one.
You want to take that one? Okay.
At this point, RIDE is recommending for unvaccinated people to wear masks in alignment. With current CDC guidance. Last week, the governor, he. You know, did not extend the executive order requiring masking for unvaccinated individuals. And and there are certain state organizations and RIDE is one of them, the Rhode Island Department of Education. That is not quite in sync with the governor's view on this. And so RIDE has told school districts to follow CDC Centers for Disease Control guidelines. And the CDC does recommend that unvaccinated people older than two years of age wear masks. In indoor public places, which is based on studies of respiratory droplets and the ability of masks to block them. As well as studies that show the effectiveness of masks in real world scenarios. So what, you know. The answer to that, Christine, if I may call you by your first name, I think.
Yes.
Ms. Olivera, Christine. Is it's too soon to tell. We're going to follow the science on this and so. There's no district right now that has a firm plan in place regarding masks indoors. As it stands right now, we will follow the CDC guidance that all unvaccinated. People ages two and over should wear masks. Can we mandate that? Likely not. Can we ask for vaccination verification? No, I've already discussed this with our attorney who. Who's on this call. Is he still here? But it is my plan to follow CDC guidance on this. Sorry, I'm snacking. It's getting late. And when we start the reopening plan, which will get a kickstart next week. We will have two members of our reopening team from the medical professional. One is Dr. Christina Nixon and she works in. The area of viral viral disease. She's a specialist. And she will definitely guide our reopening team. And so we're going to follow the science on this. I understand the argument that kids are out all summer without masks, et cetera, et cetera. And it will be difficult to mask them in the fall to get their compliance. But. I have to think of the health of our entire school community, including our staff. And so those decisions will be made based on the guidance at the time. Offered by the Centers for Disease Control. Unless there's a reactivation of the executive order based on what's happening in some day camps and overnight camps. Throughout the country, we don't know where this is going to go.
Okay, so just to clarify, so even though because of HIPAA and other policies of that. Like you said, you cannot ask for verification if they're vaccinated. So it may come down to where some children have to wear masks and some don't.
We can strongly recommend. And. That will be this school department's. Policy. We will strongly recommend masking of all individuals who are unvaccinated. Yes, it's the honor system, but. Hopefully, the state will step in and assist in supporting something more definitive.
Okay, I just was hoping to hear the opposite, especially with Little Compton class sizes being so small and having the room.
Yeah.
We kept our kids home last year because of that and I was hoping. This year. But, you know, to have them out right now freely playing with all their friends and living life to have them. Basically have to be muzzled, you know, now come fall. That just doesn't sit well with me. So like I said, I know that there are guidelines that have to be followed, like you said, from the CDC. But I was curious to hear how you as a committee felt about.
And our attorney is going to shut this down because we're we're in a discussion that was not on the agenda, but we could definitely put this on the August agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Christine.
John, did you want to add anything more? Were you just gonna?
No, I was gonna add that I was gonna do exactly what the superintendent said and say, this is not on the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. And and for everybody's benefit, we're required by the Open Meetings Act to publish an agenda two business days beforehand. And then we are supposed to stick to that agenda so that somebody can't say, wait a minute, I heard you were talking about masks and. Policies and so forth. That wasn't on the agenda. So out of fairness to the people who are not here, who might be interested in masks. I agree with the superintendent's wrapping up the discussion and in and indicating that it would be on the August agenda. Which is frankly what just about every other community is doing when we have more information.
I'm I'm assuming the August agenda will contain a big information section on restarting the school in September.
I suspect you're right.
My detective.
Absolutely. It's already getting thicker and thicker.
Yeah. Okay, great. Does anyone have anything else they need to add? If not, if, without a yes?
Yes, please. Can I just ask one thing on eight point two, please? I know we already went over that, but where do we stand as a committee right now or as a policy? Are we allowing the public to come back to see these meetings in person?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we make that known, that they can either, they'll be able to do it through via Zoom or they can come to the school and actually be able to participate here in person.
Yes, and I'm sure. I'm sure Mariah will add that to the announcement where she sends out the agenda to four dots.
Okay, just, the only reason why I bring this up is. I kind of interpreted that was only for the school committee to come back and the public was not welcome back in here. So I wanted to make clarify that.
Okay, I think today was just the committee to get the bugs out and see how it all worked next month. Is open to everyone. Thanks for that. All right, if I don't see any more questions, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
Second.
Awesome. Roll call, please, Mariah.
Polly Allen.
I.
Travis Audi.
I.
Hannah Yat.
I.
Rita Kenahan.
Hi.
Mike Richa.
Ayes.
Great, thank you all. See you all in person next month.
Thanks, Polly.